Welcome to the Biloxi City Councilman Meeting Tuesday, July 2nd, 2019. Our annual six o'clock meeting. We need to start with the invocation by Chaplain Robert Burris, please.
Gracious heavenly Father, you're so blessed and only sovereign one, the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords. We thank you, God, for giving us your son, Jesus Christ, and we also thank you for this day that you have given us, that we still have another day to tell others how precious and loving you are. Lord, I want to lift up our mayor, our city council, our directors of police and fire, and all other city departments. You have told us in your word, there is no authority except from God, and those which exist are established by God, and by this, Lord, we know we are here for a purpose. I pray, dear God, that you will give our city government understanding and wisdom in the work they have been appointed to do, and that this team of people will continue to come together as one for the great city of Biloxi, Mississippi, and make it even greater than it already is. Lord, I ask that you would also clean up our Gulf waters, so that those who depend on it for a living can get back to work and provide for their families. May the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ be with you all. Amen.
Mr. Delmois White, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge is to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Glavine. Need a second. Second by Ms. Newman. Any questions? All in favor? Two, three, four, five, five zero. Motion carry. Ms. Lucy, could you read amendments, please?
To our policy agenda, we're removing item 4A ordinance pertaining to cruise vessel license taxing gaming. To our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5E resolution, reappointing Joanne Humphries to the Biloxi Planning Commission, and we're also substituting item 5EE, the exhibit A only.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Moved by Mr. Lawrence. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any questions? All in favor? Seven zero. Motion carry. Mayor's report.
Well, first, as you noticed, we're flying in the missing man formation tonight. The mayor is on his way back from the National Mayor's Conference in Honolulu, where I'm sure he bought some really ugly aloha shirts that we'll get to see someday. He's on the way, lands sometime later tonight. I have just a couple of items, I think they're good ones. First of all, I want you to know that our second appeal to the FEMA de-obligation of $8 million has been prepared and is being sent out tomorrow, a couple of days ahead of the deadline. Much work has gone into this detailed justification, and our congressional staffs have been briefed and asked to support the, our appeal. We've got a lot tied up in this one. The appeal looks solid. They seem to have closed all the loops in the problems that we had in the first appeal, so we'll see how it goes. Second item, July 2020 budget workshops this month. This is, July is usually workshop month when we begin to put the budget together. The staff has already been working. You know, we've completed the initial review of the anticipated revenues and are completing a first scrub of the department and non-department budgets. I put at your place a schedule to show you where we are in the schedule and what we'll have to do, and I wouldn't recommend we do it tonight, but we need to get together with council and come up with some dates for some workshops sometime during the month of July. Also, wanted to give you a first look at some conceptual pictures of the Gold Star Families Monument that's going to be constructed on Geis Park. If I could get a little help from our IT experts here. I don't think you've seen these before. This is a beautiful monument that has been offered to us. It's going to be paid for by the Kessler Federal Credit Union. It's a, Gold Star Family is a family that's lost a serviceman in combat or in military operations. We have a lot, oddly enough, a lot of Gold Star Families here in town, but more importantly, we have a lot of Gold Star Families that visit this town. This monument has a front, that's the standard front, and it also has a back. Each one is a little unique, and you'll notice the back of the, etched in the back of that granite stone is one plaque called the Homeland Plaque that has the Biloxi Lighthouse, the visitor's center, a C-130 line over the top, and a shrimp boat going across. So it makes it very unique to Biloxi. There'll be a groundbreaking on July the 23rd. Time to be announced, and this monument should be complete sometime in late November for dedication. Should be a beautiful addition to our park down, it'll be located in the park right where the crosswalk comes down, next to the World War II, World War I monument, next to the Gold Star, the Purple Heart Monument, next to the USS Mississippi Monument. So it's going to really be a nice addition to that park. So that's the first look that we've had just today of what that panel would look like on the back that talks to Biloxi. Last thing I've got, you approved at a previous meeting just a few weeks ago, our six Thailand applications. You, I just realized today, when I looked at the list of Thailand applications from all the other cities, why it's so difficult for us to elbow our way into our fair share. We submitted six applications, there are a total of 120 applications for Thailand grants for the 2020 payout, so hopefully ours will fare well. We feel good about a couple of them, but they're in now, so we're in the mix. So really, that's it I've got today. Hopefully, we'll, God willing, our mayor will get back here tonight and I don't have to do this again.
It's only six. I mean, yeah.
Only six. They're all good ones, so they add up to a lot of money, and they're all good projects. And we, back channel, have been told that some of them are very positively received, so we'll see.
All right, thank you, Ms. Newman.
Just a second. Peter, is there anything that, is there a way that we could get a percentage of what we turn in? We turn in 8.5 million a year in the Thailand money, and how come we can't see any? We get 300,000 throwers every year. So I want to ask him this.
Okay, I'm gonna let you ask him. I'm gonna go ahead and close out the mayor's report. Thank you, Mr. Leonard, and we're gonna go into the council report. George, your turn. Council report, go ahead, George.
I was asking the mayor to ask questions, but go ahead, Peter. Somebody needs answering.
We did do a updating sort of pot jar of monies that the city has reduced to its businesses, and the money that the city has received compared to other areas, and the mayor's reviewing that and deciding how to use that to our best advantage. We do have updated numbers, which are basically the same. Basically, producing 85%, receiving 13%.
I mean, that's pretty weak, you know? I don't know why they think we set it where the city produces the majority of the money. Not saying we need to get it all, but you're talking about eight and a half million dollars, and every year they give us 300,000 dollars like a joke. Here's 300,000, I'll go away. And nobody else puts any other plans on the table, any better than what we do. So I have, I know Mike said they got six plans, and we probably got great plans. If we get one, we're lucky. I mean, there's something needs to be done, after me, it's just wrong. When you put that, when you put that kind of money out, people don't realize that 8.5 million comes from the city of Biloxi out of the 10 million. And we get 300,000, maybe 350, something like that. So I mean, I think that's a major problem in the city. Now, all these people running right now for reelection, telling how much they're gonna help the coast, and when they get in the office, they don't seem to do that.
Yeah, we've tried, the county, y'all have passed previous legislation asking for a minimum of, say, 20, 25%. We've, we've passed, tried to pass legislation that we could earmark money we're already receiving, getting a little bit more, and put it into the marina for upgrades, and we've not really been able to push any of those bills through. But it's a coastwide, you know, when it comes to that, the coast kind of is not necessarily one coast.
I think the people in the city of Biloxi needs to know that we're not receiving what we should be receiving, since we create that much funds, and yet we're not getting the money back for the people in the city of Biloxi like we should be getting, so.
It may be good for B News to lay some, it may be good to lay some of that out in a B News in the future, giving it to all the citizens.
Yeah, 'cause I think they'd really be upset to realize what we're getting back, what we put up. Y'all gotta remember that this week, the 4th of July, so at nine o'clock off De Island, off the bar, they'll be shooting the fireworks, which the Boom Boom Committee puts on, they do a good job, and the city gets a lot of credit for that, and it's a good event for that night. A lot of people get on beaches, and we're still doing the dead zone from the harbor back, where you can't shoot the fireworks on the beach. We can't, the public can't shoot them.
Fireworks free zone, yes. One of the problems with the fireworks free zone this year is there's a lot of construction going on in that, in that area, and we've asked the contractor to be able to fence off the areas to keep people from wandering into, falling in a hole or something. That's the governor's project for the outfalls that's going on in that area. Councilman, you, we were at the same event earlier this week. Do you remember the total number of dollars that goes into this fireworks display we have? Something like 50 grand? Pretty impressive.
Yeah. It was a nice, a bunch of people with sponsors there, I mean, Mike was there, and Kenny was there. It's a nice little dinner they had there for the sponsors that show up, and, but they do, they do a lot of work, and a bunch that's been dealing with it so long, they probably added a lot of five, 10 thousand dollars, extra stuff into it, because we've been using the same company for a while, and they do a great job. So it turns out good for the city of Biloxi. It's probably good to display in the southeast areas, anybody.
Well, they said it was the largest fireworks display in the state of Mississippi.
Yeah.
So, I hope everybody comes out to enjoy it.
I know Chuck is the shooter, he's off the third, but you know, that's a different thing, like those, they shoot them right in front of you, they're not very high, they're great, what they did at the ball field, but those big ones that go up, they $600 a pop, they go up 500 feet and about 50 feet wide, them, $600 a shot, them thing.
You constantly amaze me, Councilman, I didn't realize you were a pyrotechnic expert.
Well, we shot the 155, but we didn't, they didn't, they didn't look that pretty when we shoot them.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Newman? No report? Mr. Demme?
No.
Dr. Tisdale?
Couple of things. I know we have a, the city has a comprehensive plan, I think the last one that was done is 2009. I'm thinking these have to be done periodically. Do we know, is it every 10 years or statutorily? Do we have to start work on one?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know.
Usually, when you write a comprehensive plan, it's supposed to be written for 20 years, unless there's something that happens that changes the vision of the city, and if the council or the administration determines that there's something that changes the vision of the city and the direction we want to go, then we can have that in a comprehensive plan.
Who should look at that and determine whether things have changed? I'm assuming the administration would do that on a day-to-day basis, what's happened in the last, I'm thinking the previous mayor was here for a generation. We've got a new mayor here for, what, this is year four, five, or whatever, and I'm just thinking, after 10 years, what's gone on or not gone on? I'm thinking we still have a lot of infrastructure work that needs to be done. I'm just thinking, it might be a good idea, and I don't know what all is involved in that, I'm assuming there's a lot of heavy lifting by the administration, but.
The reason we were able to do it in 2009, because it's a day, there was money that was available, and we were able to do the comprehensive plan, and the way the government supported us, it was done about the same, same.
Okay. Is it possible to look around and see if there are any grants out there? Okay. The second thing is the homeless. Are we doing anything? I ask this question periodically. Are we looking at any initiatives? I just know if, if we don't do anything differently, nothing really is going to change.
Well, we're not LA yet, that's for sure, or San Francisco. Our police department is working within the boundaries of what they're allowed to do. Chief, you want to add anything? I mean, we get a report every week of the homeless detail, he has a dedicated homeless detail that does nothing but dealing with homeless issues.
So we're also working with the state, and just recently, Biloxi Regional and Gulfport Memorial both came on, the single points of entry, and that is related to the mentally ill, which about 70% of our homeless have mental issues. We've, in the process, we've trained several officers in critical incident control, and we hope to have more trained in the future, so these officers can actually determine if someone needs to be, needs an evaluation on the street. They can do it right there, it's recognized by the state, so we're able to take them directly to one of the hospitals, which is a single point of entry, and if there's a bed available somewhere, we can get them off the street that way.
I know at one time, we were looking at a transition center, I think Bova came up, and that didn't go anywhere. Personally, I like the concept of processing people and trying to match them with the resources. It's just, I don't know, if we're not doing anything more than what we've been doing, I know we're dealing with it as best we can, but if, I just don't see things getting any better. Anyway, that's all, I just, from time to time, I just try and poke and prod people. Maybe we can move forward at some point on this. That's all that I have, thank you.
Councilman, we'll have the opportunity in the budget discussions to do something different.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I have a few things. First and foremost, I want to just shout out for Brantley Ellison with Be Fit. They held a charity run over in my ward, Ward 6, for Kenna Creel Hendricks. She suffers with cancer. There's quite a turnout. I made sure I stopped by, I wasn't able to do the run, but I was able to stop by and commend him for making sure that we put on a good charity event. Also, I'd like to thank Jerry Creel. We had a Family Dollar did kind of a grand opening, or a re-grand opening, and it was very successful, but I appreciate your assistance with some of the issues out there. The Boom Boom Committee, George, your main driver with that, but it is something that affects our entire city, and it drives a lot of tourists and interest to our area, and I commend all the members of the committee, Robin Cron, Jerry Monroe, I'm leaving out Bancorp South. They do a tremendous job with their volunteer effort to put that on and get the sponsorships necessary to make our 4th of July fireworks show the best it can be in the southeast. A word on, I know the new convention in hospitality, future study for East Biloxi has come out, and the administration is reviewing it, the public have an opportunity to go online and look at the actual 140-something page study. I would encourage the council and the administration to get together on some workshops, so that we can be interactive in some of the dialogue, and maybe whatever suggestions and recommendations come out of that. I'm very interested in reading the full report, and I'll dive into that this afternoon, after this meeting. Also, I know there's some interest at parties today that are probably going to speak during public comments on the butchering of some of our oak trees, as Mississippi Power does their due diligence to clear the power lines, so they're not in jeopardy of rubbing against those branches and causing issues. It's probably time for us to take a very, very serious look on burying those power lines underground and finding a resource and a means to doing that, and if we're redoing any of our ordinances, maybe we move in that direction, in the best interest in key areas and certain areas of the city. Just got a couple of things, Mr. President. I need an update from engineering or Public Works on the Bien vu and Corana property that's over in Pelican Bayou. They've been patiently waiting for some kind of connection to shed the water and drainage. They've put in a line, but there's another box that's necessary to make that drainage effective, and they're waiting patiently for an update on that. If I can get an update, I'd appreciate it. And then finally, on the agenda tonight also, is coast bench advertising. And in the, in the measure tonight, there's some language that says they desire to continue erecting and maintaining benches. Not just erecting them or putting them in place, but maintaining those benches. So as we consider approving it or not approving it, we need to ensure that maintaining those benches is a key part, because if they're in disrepair, and they're broken, and they're causing potential hazards and their eyesores, it's not fair for us to have those structures in and around the city. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Glavine. Mr. Mayor?
The only thing I have is I encourage everyone on the council to support item X on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have, I have three things. First of all, I want to thank you, Walt, for setting up a meeting with Oscarunda, so we can get to that end game, and I appreciate your efforts into trying to make, help us close out the North Side project before the end of the year, so just wanted to say, I appreciate it. The next thing I have, right before school ends, we're gonna have a backpack giveaway. I'm gonna urge my council members, CEO, and mayor to give us a little donation along with the second liners in Henry Beck Park. We're gonna have young kids like myself that's gonna be out there with the water gun fight with all the kids, and I want all the young adults to come on out and help me take on these young kids and give away backpacks. So I encourage you all, you guys, to help in a small monetary donation.
What's the date again? What's the date?
The date. I'll get that to you next, next meeting. I can't remember the date. It'll be right before school start.
He lost his water gun.
Yeah, I lost my water gun. And of course, my last thing is, this being my last meeting as the president, I want to preach, thank you, the council, for supporting me and everything, thank the present administration also for supporting me as a president, and we have a great, great next president coming up, Ms. Dixie Newman, so I just wanted to thank you guys, and that concludes my report. All right, I'm gonna move on to our public agenda, citizen comments, total allotted time of 45 minutes, three minutes per person. Would anyone on my left would like to come up and have a comment? Yes, ma'am? Please sign your name on the form and give us your name and address for the records, please, ma'am.
I'm Arlene Canon, 135 Benaki Avenue. I have given all the council members and the mayor or whoever, a copy, a copy of pictures of Benaki Avenue, which was known as the Street of Cathedral Oaks. Y'all have them in order. They were given to you in order of how the street looked, how it looked a year ago, and how it looks now. I've also given you several pictures of how the company used by Mississippi Power to cut, rather mutilate, our trees. The men cutting the trees could barely speak English, much less understand or know what a protected tree is. I tried to talk to them. This has to stop. We are a tree city, in case y'all have forgotten. I would like the city of Biloxi to file suit on behalf of the citizens of Biloxi against the Public Service Commission. To stop all these utility companies from coming anytime they want and leaving property in a terrible condition, look at Irish Hill, what they did it. Look at the mess on Howard Avenue made up and down every time these optical cables are dug. I mean, there's nothing but sand and rock all over. They even came on my property without my permission and dug a huge hole, and all the grass was gone. I want to thank, though, Walter Rodey for getting that fixed for me. Thank you, Walter. The mayor even said he has no control over these companies, and he has, they should have to report to a department head and present a list of what they will be doing and when. The city should make them sign an agreement as to how the property should be maintained, and then they should inspect it. The tree company should have to submit a daily list as to what streets they will be cutting on, and the Auburnists should know ahead of time if there are protected trees on that street, and explain to them our ordinances. Fines should be assessed if the guidelines are not followed. Unless you have lived on a street under construction, you have no idea what I'm talking about. It's like a war zone. We bought our house in 1985 on Benaki because, number one, of the location, number two, the beautiful trees, and number three, all the big windows that we could look out at those beautiful trees. So far, I have personally spent about $1,500 for car repairs. I've had to replace a Michelin tire that wasn't even 18 months old, and I'm sure that our property values have gone down on our streets since all this destruction, especially the destruction of our beautiful oak trees. So please look at these pictures, if you haven't visited our street. It's really a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Canon. But anyone else on my left would like to speak?
It's been a while since I've been up here.
Yes.
And I have a few concerns, I live on Crawford Street, and I have a few concerns that come to mind was about this convention center, whatever they're trying to come up with, on Tillis Manor. Well, we don't need any more convention centers or condos, we've got enough. And Tillis Manor is the only beautiful spot left in Biloxi that went through all these storms, these beautiful old oak trees. It seemed like when a business comes in, they always wanting to hit Tillis Manor. But we got a lot of other property on the back bay there. There's no big trees or anything. So I'm hoping that if ever y'all, it comes to pass to where y'all have to vote on something, please vote no on it. We do have a tree ordinance, but a lot of these businesses disregard it. So please keep Tillis Manor the way it is, and there's other businesses that can come in without destroying the trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? I'm gonna switch to the right. Anyone on my right? Anyone in the back of the room? Did I miss anyone? Okay, we're gonna close out the public agenda and citizen comments. Moved by Mr. Glavine.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Tisdale as first reading. Ordinance C.
Ordinance for a master plan to include a zoning map amendment for three properties identified as 195, 205, and 219 fronting on Beach Boulevard.
I'll move for approval. I'll second it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Dr. Tisdale. That's also the first reading.
Ordinance for a zoning map amendment for change in zoning from RM 30 High Density to CB Community Business for property collectively identified as 1805 Irish Hill Drive and 183 McDonald Avenue.
Moved by Ms. Newman.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Tisdale. That's also the first reading. Ordinance E, second reading, Ms. Lucy.
Ordinance to amend the Section 234 Parking in the Small Craft Harbor.
Okay, that was moved by?
By me.
Mr. Tisdale, and seconded by Mr. Barrett.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale, any comments?
I have a couple of questions. Dealing with these parking areas, how are they going to be marked so that the public knows that they're reserved, in effect, reserved or available only for harbor or marina patrons? Is there going to be some sort of signage, I guess, any barriers or?
Yeah, there'll be signage saying, first of all, there's no overnight camping. We want that sign out there. These are the areas also we're looking at potentially having some parking arms up where they would be hourly or half a day or day parking. And we feel anybody in those areas, if you're there for the day, you're basically using that area, but this is an intent to stop the overnight camping, basically.
All right, and the other thing is, with that in mind, I appreciate that perspective, I'm thinking, so law enforcement, basically, if there was an issue, would be the ones that are enforcing this ordinance?
Yes.
So if my friend, Mr. Glavine, goes down and parks in the restricted area that's for marina patrons, but he's not a patron, but he parks his car and goes elsewhere, how does law enforcement know? They'll know whose car is there, but how do they know where Mr. Glavine is, whether he's at the marina or skip town or whatever?
Swam over to Deer Island.
Or swam to Deer Island.
If he's paying a day rate, we probably would have, he probably would be allowed to stay there even if he caught an Uber to Ocean Springs or something like that. But if he stayed there and it was noticeable after several days that car has not moved, that would become a different story.
Okay, but really, the issue is individuals who park, whether they're RVs or vehicles, for a number of days at a time that have nothing to do with the harbor or marina.
Right, or a good place to come down for the summer if you don't want to go to an RV park, things like that.
And you view this as enforceable based on what we've talked about?
Yes.
I mean, in terms of actually somebody following through, knowing who's where or when? Okay, thank you. I'm done, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale. Ms. Barrett, you have any comments?
The two parking lots, it's the Small Craft Harbor and where at Point Cadet? Oh, it's not at the, it's at the Point Cadet Marina, I'm sorry. Yes.
This is, there's already, the ordinance that's already on the books deals with the Small Craft Harbor, Biloxi Small Craft Harbor. What we're doing is taking that ordinance and we're adding the Kavasovich Lot, and we're adding the, I guess, sort of the parking lot that's just south of the Ocean Springs Bridge, Biloxi Ocean Springs Bridge.
So that's like right up, right when you would go under it, under the bridge, that area?
Well, when you turn into the Golden Nugget Parking Lot and you're weaving your way back towards the marina, if you go towards the left, there's, it's basically where all the RVs are camped out.
So if I wanted to go and run the bridge, I wouldn't be able to go park in that lot to go run the bridge?
Yes, you would.
Okay. I'm just, there's a lot of people that do that, a lot of people that, you know, citizens that go and park there and run the bridge. Could we just amend the ordinance to include some language that would protect anyone that was concerned about using the bridge for running or anything like that?
Sure, you could put bridges right there by piers or docks. We could use the word "bridge."
So I'll move to amend the language to include the word "bridge."
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to amend by Mr. Demming. Did you already read it in? And that was the second by Mr. Glavine. Okay, we have any discussion on the amendment? No discussion, all in favor? Okay, 7-0, motion carries. Now we have the ordinance with the amendment. Any more questions, Ms. Barrett? Okay, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, this was all put together because people saw the movement, and we did this by the splash pad last year. We kept putting signs, can I park overnight? Can I park overnight, just like the bays? But you have to have this thing listed our way, they have some type of control, and that's basically all we're trying to do. Because they'll come in and park there and stay there. And I'd be, we had a lot of problems last year, run a lot of people off because they're not going to stay in a hotel, not going to hook up, they use the bathroom, you know? And it just had a lot of problems for the people that needed it. So that's the idea of putting the ordinance together. Any other language y'all want to put in it? Fine. Just some way you have to control them, and the police will control that. Now you're out there at 3:00 in the morning, they're not supposed to be there. So you have some rights.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
I have nothing further to add. Did you get the language?
And Mr. Glavine?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay, I'm going to call for a question. All in favor with the amendment? 7-0. Ordinance E passes.
As agreed.
Resolution F, Ms. Lucy?
Resolution to appoint a president of the Biloxi City Council.
I'll move it. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions? Our next president, Ms. Newman? Call for a question, all in favor? 7-0, motion carries.
You want a picture or something? Thank you so much, Felix. You led us very well the last nine months, and I'm humbled and honored to be leading right behind you. With that being said, I am looking forward to making the city council meetings great again. I'm just kidding. I'm kidding.
After your last term, we had to replace the gavel, so should we have a budget amendment?
With that being said, I'll throw it at your head. I'm kidding. Okay, Ms. Lucy, will you please read Resolution G?
Resolution to appoint a vice president of the city council.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it. I'll second it.
All right, any discussion?
I do. I mean, I'm going to support it because I think he needs a little bit more seasoning before he can move up, so I'm going to, I'll support it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous votes?
This is not going to be Mr. and Mrs.'s routine, Demming, is it?
Mr. and Mrs. Demming, congratulations. Where's my ring? Okay. Moving on, Ms. Lucy.
Resolution for conditional use approvals for establishing a contractor's office for property located at 246 Iberville Drive.
I'll second it.
Motion by Felix and a second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Felix? Mr. Tisdale?
Done.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous votes, moving on. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Felix, and we'll start with Mr. Barrett. Do you have any discussion on any items?
I have a couple. Can you explain on Q exactly? It says that we have to move money over, but we're not going to have a shortfall, so...
I think the best person to explain this convoluted story is our city contract manager. She can come up. We're not really spending any more money that's in the budget, but it's a cash flow issue.
It's just like Mr. Lawrence said, it's a cash flow issue. Every month, we pay the full bill and then the board reemburses us. If you take $5,000 a month, which is what we pay, it's lesser than $5,000 and a half. Multiply that times 12, you get $60,000, which is exactly what we have in our budget. Over time, as I'm paying that $5,000 down every month, come September, we won't have any money in the account to pay the full bill, which will then be reimbursed to us in October. So this is just a matter of cash flow to give us sufficiently compared to the full bill in full for five months.
The important point here is that's the budget, we're not moving outside what we agreed to, and that was the $5,000 a month or half of the bill, whichever is lesser. Now, one of the things that we're working on is trying to move the bill so it moves, they bill the museum instead of us.
That's a process that you would find cost in working on arrangements for that.
It's a lot easier if we could just, right now, they bill us for $15,000. We pay $15,000, then we got to go invoice the museum for the different ten. We get that back, and it's just kind of a cash flow issue.
Are they delaying paying those back?
But we're not backing off on the five, the five grand a month for the utility bill is what we agreed to, and that's what we're, that's all we're paying.
They never take them longer than two weeks to turn the money around to us in the entire year, and we've never spent more. But because the bill falls due 15th of September, that pushes the repayment into October and there are sufficient months to wait until they pay.
I know the last year, you put them on guard that they need to cut that electrical bill down from $15,000. They hadn't done it. They're still running that high.
Well, what, you know, what we've learned is that that facility is not really sustainable when it comes to the utility costs. So you approved a $5,000 a month maximum that we pay, and anything over and above that, whether they're energy efficient or not energy efficient, they suck it up. But I think it's going to get a little easier if Mississippi Power is working with us and has told us that if we want to change, normally when you change a bill over to somebody else, they got to pay a big down upfront cost to do that. But they said if we just did a small bond for the transition, that they would start billing the museum directly, and that'll clean that up next year where we'll just simply include that in their management fee, so we don't have to do all this back and forth, back and forth with the money.
That was tough, a lot of money.
Maybe we should just tear it down. Okay. A tiger press.
Any other items, Mr. Barrett?
That's all.
Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, Item G. Mr. Legner here?
He's not, but we've talked to him, and let's ask Rachel to come back up again.
As I reiterated earlier...
Yeah, we're absolutely in agreement with you. This has got to go away. We're trying to be careful about it, not make this ugly. He's got advertising that is paid in advance. If we were to remove all of his benches, he'd have to turn around and give a lot of advertisers money back. So there's 11 benches that have to be gone by next week. That's the first batch. And we're going to name some more, and we're going to work our way towards getting rid of as many of these benches as we can. I've talked to CTA about this. CTA's got benches in our city, and that the income that they make off those benches is a credit against our bill when they calculate what we pay CTA. So, you know, we may be able to, again, get rid of some of our benches and work with CTA, put more theirs in.
So let me ask the question, if, again, this agreement, again, says he wants to erect and maintain them, is there any mechanism if they're not maintained and we have to contract out to replace or repair or remove at his expense?
It says if one's broken, we notify him and he has to get rid of it or fix it, and if he doesn't, we take it away and we charge him for doing that. That's in the contract. And we're going to enforce that. My favorite bench is the one right here at the end of the Lemieux Street where there's a homeless person on it every morning when I come in. My second favorite bench is the one that's got Peter Ray Biden's wife's picture, and there's always a homeless guy sitting with her. Both of those are going away.
That's not your first favorite? Never mind, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, also on Item G, this is not an exclusive contract. It's a non-exclusive contract, I would assume, and that being the case, there may be, as you said, CTA might be interested, and it's a good way to knock down our contribution perhaps a little bit each year. But also, there may be other entities out there that might be interested in advertising that also might pay us a bit more, so might want to consider that as well. That's all I had for G. On Items V and W, it deals with appraisals. And I was wondering, I didn't see an amount in there on what we pay for the appraisals.
Right, U and V.
Okay, well, we'll look at U and V. That's with Polis and A Bear, right?
Right. What this is, is they're under an existing contract from the FEMA, Infrastructure Easements. I think it was, Walt would have the exact numbers, I think it's like $1,200 for an appraisal and $800 for a review, and that's to do easements. And this is for the cemetery property that FEMA is asking us to purchase, some extra cemetery.
My only question was, I just never saw what we're paying them. It refers to 2012, and George would be the only one that would, might remember what they charged us in 2012. Any...
Rachel, you know that, huh?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rodey.
On Item EE, I mean, this deals with the grounds maintenance. I know that we're substituting the exhibit only. The question I have is where the lighthouse is, and we improved that area south of the lighthouse, that parking area, and we put up some landscaping in big bollards, and we put up some decorative posts with, I guess, for the nautical effect, some rope, sort of keep folks out of the flowerbed, and people just run right over those things. Is there, who, is that, does the fire department maintain that? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. He was laughing, I just want to get his attention. Does Public Works maintain?
It's nautical, I think we gave it to the port.
Oh, I wish we could, wish we could, but...
Actually, you're very right. Anything around, we find the same thing in Eller Park. If you don't make it substantial where it does damage to the car, they're just going to run over stuff.
We just need to do...
Nice idea, it didn't work.
Well, we need to do something because it looks tacky. They might be better off removed, but then you lose...
Tacky?
Tacky.
Okay. We're working on it, Councilman, it's a good point.
It's unattractive, okay.
Let's see, the other item I have is...
And I think you've got some correspondence from the Secretary of State.
Right. I was going to ask Mr. Abyd if he had an opinion or...
Yeah, I guess the Secretary of State has delivered a letter saying that they don't think the city has the right to manage or build peers, and we would disagree with that. We've done it at Oak Street. We have other peers. We own that right of way. I did check with Mr. Kavanaugh with RW and asked if he wanted to move forward, and he said he did, so...
Being our legal advisor, can you say any reason not to act on this tonight?
No, I think our lease and our option and the resolution also says they must get all other approvals that are necessary. So it's not cutting anybody off that I could see.
All right. Thank you, sir. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Demme?
I think we've covered all the stuff that I had questions with. I just want to make sure that you guys know that I was completely joking when I said that.
Can't say that. You'd be on TV again with Doug Elliott.
About what? I mean, which? Never mind.
Mr. Guines?
I'm okay. I'm good.
Mr. Lawrence?
On N, I know this is a great idea, but it's roughly a million and a half dollars. Are we going, any particular plans to figure out where we can get that million and a half to do that underground work? Or we have to just start from scratch?
This is the second time this, tonight, we're talking about putting power underground, and it's obviously something that we really, in hurricane-prone area, we are, at every opportunity, we should look for an opportunity to put power underground. From I... This proposal from I-110 to Forest Avenue and the new Boulevard, the Mississippi Power has agreed to put their power underground. Now, it's not free, but it's part of the project cost, but it's going to be underground. Every time we build a new development, whether it be Nature's Trail or name some others that we've recently done, as Jerry Creel could share with you, every time we build new, almost entirely, it's underground. So over time, we're moving in that direction. It's just in the older parts of the city and in West Biloxi where we still have so much power above ground and how it's terribly expensive to put it underground. But this is an example of a mile of a street that's going to go underground here. That's what that resolution is. It's accepting their proposal.
Yeah, I saw that, but do you have any idea where you're getting the money from? That was my question.
That's part of the project financing. That if you remember, if you recall, the Kessler Gate Outside is the project name. Kessler Gate Outside is the Boulevard Street from Forest Avenue all the way back to I-110. It's a 17-point-something-million-dollar project. We've got $10 million in the bank, $5 million promised in a bond to us, so we're a couple of million dollars short of totally finishing that, but we've got the first 15 million committed, so that's where the money's coming from.
I mean, this is an additional million and a half. I mean, the product totally was 37 million dollars, so now you add a million and a half to that.
Yeah, that's being part... That's part of the project financing for that project, so...
Yeah, but I wasn't listed at the beginning because it was never anything underground. So it's additional million and a half. That's all I was actually waiting on me to... The product itself is supposed to cost 37 million total. Now, is it 38.5 million?
It was initially clearly local, as a construction, so it wasn't separated out. Because each, actually, we're looking at whole, each hidden utility, a payment to go underground from that river. So it's already in the budget. People are already expecting it from the very beginning. It just wasn't why not now. Part of the local structure.
Tommy Murphy, you want to say anything?
That's brand news to me, I tell you.
We have this... We have Mississippi Power in the house tonight, so...
Thank you for pointing out that. I was planning to just sit and listen tonight, so I didn't know this was going to happen. But we're very proud to serve the customers of Biloxi, own property in Point Biloxi, lifelong resident of the coast. Trees are very remote. I'm sorry. We have to keep the lights on, right? So it's two reasons, safety and reliability. So we cut trees with our arborists and with the city's arborists in every city that we serve. We try to cut trees against the standards, make sure we're keeping the trees healthy. So we have to do that. It's an obligation. As far as underground, we have nothing against underground. I have underground in my neighborhood. We would love underground. Somebody asked me the differential cost, the cost between putting overhead and underground utilities. We're certainly not opposing that in any way.
So... I got a sing. I got a sing. Pardon me? Now I got a sing. I'm not making light of it. I do know. Look, I have friends and family who I know how upsetting it is, and I mean that sincerely. Yes, ma'am. We have arborists on staff. We have arborists with the city. They are. We ride their routes. Yes, ma'am. So if you have a specific question for me, I'll be happy to answer it.
I have a question. So if we go to bury lines and everything, I mean, certainly the cost over the long term to trim power lines now is not an expense anymore, and it may be minimal, but that would be calculated in the cost of burying lines and stuff like that as a credit or something like that, correct? Or incorrect?
That would make sense, right. So what we do is we charge, if we're going to bury lines, first of all, we make sure that we pay, the customer pays the differential. So there's a cost to putting a line overhead, and so the cost to bury it is more expensive. The equipment's more expensive, and so we charge the difference between the two. And so you're asking, would we also reduce the cost for the tree trimming? That would reduce costs as well.
It also seems that the property owner could have an interest in this because it may increase the value, become a selling point if it's, you know, the home is an investment, you know, that it would increase the value of the property, that we don't have these overhead property lines, and the aesthetics of the neighborhood is more beautiful.
Absolutely. And that's why neighborhoods choose to go underground. There's several neighborhoods that put underground utilities. That's right. So they put that into the covenants and make it a part of the neighborhood, so...
When it's all said and done, we'll probably have spent $5 or $6 million acquiring property down Division Street in order to widen the street, and that was, that is also one of the factors. Let's think about if you were to make the power lines on Pass Road underground. It would really make Pass Road look nice, but we'd probably have to acquire a lot of real estate to do that in addition to the cost of, you know, to put in the facility, build them down ground. So it's just one of these things that cities have to do over time. And we should do just what you say, Councilman. We should, at every opportunity, when we have a project that's got some money in it, we should always opt for underground.
When you bury the power lines, you bury all the rest of the cable, everything else?
Yes.
So everything buried at one time?
Yes.
I know the cable, they're not going to give you anything. They'll just charge you something. They terrible.
If your power goes underground, how, uh, total of the cables, any visiting, if there's an area, will have to order down underground, nine to the top of all these power poles. So if your power poles come down, they're running through the storm.
Meaning, there will be no, on that stretch from I-110 to Forest Avenue, there will be no poles?
Yeah.
That's right.
Good.
Yes, there will be temporary on the ground. That's correct. There will not be poles.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, thank you. The only question I have is, it might be nice... Christie, welcome back, by the way. As a gift, could you check with Mississippi Power and perhaps, I'm trying to remember the other utilities. It's not Singing River. Is it Coast Electric? Just to see, just to see, what is a general figure, and I guess they would measure it by foot, what does it cost to put it underground? So much a foot or a mile or whatever? It might just be something worth pursuing in some areas or maybe to get started on or do something. No, I can imagine, right? I can imagine. Okay? And that would include those other utilities that would have to come off the pole as well. I'm just curious as to what that might be. I'm sure it's pricey. Okay. Thank you.
Obviously, poles a million and a half a mile. That's what it's costing us.
Okay. And I would just like to ask that y'all support Resolution AA.
I'm not finished.
Huh? You're not finished?
No.
Go ahead.
Only did one so far. You know better than that.
You're right.
I'm asking Bill Raymond this one because we renewing one contract with Gulf Breeze, and our landscape, we got a change order, number four. What are they changing, Billy? Well, somebody needs to find out because I'm not going to hire somebody going to sit there and change every time we turn around, change order, add flowers or something.
The only change on that is I was able to negotiate...
Get it by the bite here.
The only change on the contract that's the substitution is that I was able to negotiate a termination for convenience, so that if we get into this and it does not satisfy our requirements, the Lighthouse Park and Visitor Center are not up to our specs, we are able to terminate this on 30 days with no obligations to continue. I felt that was worth a substitute.
That's good, then, but then when the new one on the other page, we approve it. So what do you have on that one?
On the others, we also have termination for convenience. That is also a part of the larger landscape, rather, grass cutting is pretty much what is property maintenance, is that they also have termination for convenience there.
So they're supposed to be controlled by the same termination?
No, it's, it would be two different terminations. This one is a completely separate contract because it controls far more than just cutting grass, picking up trash. It is literally to keep the Lighthouse Park and Visitor Center, the jewel that it is. It's the center of our city. It's where you go. It's our first impression. We want the best possible for it. This includes, you know, keeping up the flowers, sprinklers, making it look nice, not just basic maintenance.
These things bid it out?
This one is not. This one attaches based on the price for bids that we got on the others. That first one that we did, we did receive bids, and Gulf Breeze came in less than a third of the cost of everybody else based on that. In fact, that this is a service and it's not required to bid, we chose to go with them.
You know, a change order changes those bids. You beat all these bids, the change order brings it back in line with everybody else, just like Oscar Renta did, you know? That's additional 12 million and change orders.
The way we've done this, this one is not actually a change order to the underlot, to that property maintenance. This is a totally separate contract, so that if, we've been happy with what they're doing with the grass cutting, this is completely separate, so that if they're not able to keep everything at the Visitor Center up to the specifications that we want, we can terminate this contract without terminating the grass-cutting contract. And that's why they've been done as two completely separate contracts.
All right. Thank you.
Wait a minute. The grass-cutting contract, we always refer to as the Demming contract. I mean, that really came out of workshop last year where, you recall, we talked about adding people to Public Works or doing it by contract. So we took your suggestion, bid it out, and it came out of literally way, way less expensive. There've been some hiccups as we try and work on anything with a contract with a scope of work, but overall, we're saving the city a lot of money by doing that, and we need to do more of it.
Sounds like he might be ready to be council president.
A question on why the $375,000 that came from the county, is this money directed to a certain project inside the harbor? Why?
Why? Okay, yeah. Well, that's a good question, Councilman. I'm glad you asked me. As you recall, we negotiated, this guy negotiated one mill of additional tax coming to the city, and this year, it's coming in four increments of $375,000 each. So each time that money comes to us, we invoice for it, it comes to us, and we come back to you with a resolution showing where we're going to put it. What we always said was we were going to not spend it on day-to-day activities. It was going to be spent on capital projects that were affecting the port and maritime activities. So in this case, what you see is us accepting the $375,000 and applying it to the East Biloxi Boardwalk, Project 2009, to Project 1055, some Point Cadet Marina repairs, and to Project 1056 sediment removal. So we're showing you where we're putting the money, and we're tracking where that county millage is going to each time. Probably the most obvious place that we put it in that first increment was the electrical upgrades for Point Cadet Marina, which, you know, got finished just before the Billfish Tournament. That's where we spent the first batch of that money.
And that was good because that was inside the harbor. That's why we wanted the boardwalk. It's considered part of the harbor.
Now, Peter could probably talk to it better than I, but this first year, they paid us out of Gomesa money. Now, this next year, they're actually going to apply the millage to, you know, the ad valorem millage to us, and I'm not real clear on how it's going to come to us yet, whether it's going to be in one lump sum or incrementally. I mean, we know the amount. We just don't know how it's going to come to us yet.
As they collect ad valorem tax, we should be getting it. It won't be in quarterly increments. We think it'll just be as part of our, as part of our ad valorem that they send to us.
I know that we were assuming power on the harbor to pay off one of the bonds. Y'all did a good job getting a full mill, which is $2 million from the county, so that's additional million and a half per year. So I mean, that's pretty sporty to put in the harbor, upgrade them, you know? That's a good thing.
Good thing.
And then I want DD, Transportation is $12 million, and I share 20% of that money. Where we going to get $2.4 million from? DD.
The apostrophe extension was used to be the... The oldest was the submarine cable, which we finally finished this year. The apostrophe extension's been going on as long as anybody in the council can remember, I'm sure. We are moving towards a time where the land has been acquired, the design is complete, the railroad crossing is approved, and then we have to build a damn thing. And we don't have the money to do the build, to actually build it. So what we're applying for is a build grant. It's a grant from the Federal Highway Administration, and we are preparing to submit that grant, asking for $12 million along with our required 20% match. And we've actually, all of the two senators and one representative are all writing letters in support of our build grant. We think we've got a really good chance of getting that money to actually build the road. So that comes down to the question you were asking us, so where's our 20% coming from?
Right.
Right? Well, for starters, the answer is in the write-up. It talks about we're going to go after Gomesa money, we're going to go after VP money, we're going to go after every MDA grants, we're going to go after everything we can and are doing that now. If all else fails, we would have to, the city would have to find the $2 million to match the 12. But like anything else, it's an 80/20 match. You know, that's a hell of a deal. But we have to, we just have to, at this time, when we ask for the grant, we have to commit to that we would come up with a $2 million match if they gave us the 12 million.
Well, since that'd be a road running right to Highway 9, could that be considered an evacuation route like Homeland Security? We can go money up to them?
This project fares very well, the write-up on its very strong highway evacuation route, business improvement. I mean, it has every, this project has everything going for it in terms of competing for the money.
Did you know that Paul, when you sleeping, you know, with the overpass, it was 20 million if you didn't overpass? It's 8 million more, not to close the railroad. If you went to overpass, it was 20 million. Same, same product, just being above the railroad track, 20 million. I thought Paul liked to know that. Let's see what we got in there. Oh, yeah, this, this last part here on this GG, I think it's time for us to find some others to do this. I have not seen anything from this guy. I've not seen any money coming from him, and now you're going to give me more money?
Well, as we've discussed, Councilman, the council has already approved a three-month extension for our lobbyists, so that's 30 grand. We have an outstanding invoice from him that's another 10 grand, so that's 40 grand.
invoice from him that's another ten grand, so that's forty grand. And the rest of that professional services money will get us across the finish line to pay, for example, the grant writer that just, just wrote all, all our grants that we just submitted for tidlands and for the MDA packages. So, that's just, uh, other professional services money that we've got to do, that we need to take from the general fund to get across the finish line. Hopefully, you know, as we go through this budget year, we, you know, our revenues are looking good. We, you know, we, we are looking like we're gonna cruise across the finish line with, you know, more revenue than we, than we budgeted. So, we believe there's money there to borrow. But that's basically what we're doing, is borrowing against general fund to do this.
Well, my problem, we talked about like that site. We didn't get any response, anything from that. And I think we're getting the same thing here. We don't get, we don't get reports. We don't get much anything. I don't know if the guy did a nickel for us. I mean, we didn't pay this man a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and we don't get anything. I couldn't tell you what the guy looks like. That's why I keep voting against it. So, I mean, could you help us out here? Does the guy actually do something for the city of Biloxi?
Well, I mean, I know in the next two weeks, with our FEMA appeals that we're sending up there, we are having some meetings set up where we will be, uh, sitting down with him, and we forward those appeals to him. So, that's sort of what he's working on this week and next, working on making sure the FEMA appeals are delivered to the right people.
But then the main question back to you, Peter, have they brought anything to the city of Biloxi? Anything?
It's hard to pinpoint what's coming from where. I mean, I think the five million dollar Kessler outside, part of the bond bill, I think there's, there's something...
But that would've done a few years ago. That probably had nothing to do with him. But anyway, I can't support it, because I just think that's a waste of ten thousand plus, little fee every month, forgetting nothing. So, I, I can't support that one. That's enough. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, Mr. Glavin has another question for you. Is he still in here?
I think he stepped out of the room, but what I would ask the administration to, ask Mr. Murphy, I know I asked him about the cost-saving for trimming the power lines. There's also an expense for trees and branches falling over those lines and causing power outages for them to send servicemen out there and overtime, et cetera. I, I would like for him to at least be on the record of saying there would be a, an adjustment for that too, if we start pursuing underground power lines. And then, one other item I missed on PB, and that's the renewal of the boat slip agreement with Biloxi Cruise Company. That's simply a renewal. There's no other changes. It's, okay. Thank you.
Got it.
Got you. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda?
You got some? Didn't you have some?
Unanimous, with the exceptions of Mr. Demming as opposed to J as in Jeffrey and K as in Kelly. You're not both? Oh, okay. Glavin is out of the room. Any other exceptions?
GG.
And Mr. Lawrence is against G.
Totally against GG.
GG. GG, GG.
GG.
Mm-hmm. Any other exceptions? All right. We'll move on to code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel?
The first case on the agenda, Item A, Robert K. McDonald, 2317 Arbor Drive. This property is still in violation.
Mr. Creel, while, while we're looking at the pictures, I've, is, is Mr. McDonald, is he deceased? Is, do you know? I'm thinking, if it's the gentleman I'm thinking of, he's deceased. He was a piano tuner, and I'm thinking maybe the heirs have this property?
That's possible. All of the correspondence that we sent certified came back unclaimed.
Uh, I don't know how you track down the heirs, but I'm, I kind of think that's who it is. Uh, how, how could we track down who has that property now? Peter, do you know?
Do you know when he died?
When he died?
Yeah. We can check for estates, and if somebody has real estate, they generally have to file an estate.
Yeah. All I could tell you is probably the last five or six years.
Okay.
It's the best I can do. But I, as I think about it, Jerry, I'm willing to bet you that it, that this is the same McDonald, and his heirs don't know about it. And maybe this would help if we could just get in touch with him. Could, how much?
And of course, all we're asking for tonight is just to clean the property up, so.
Right.
Well, we can find out who's paying the taxes. Somebody's probably been paying the taxes, and we can locate them that way.
Could you do, you said, how long would it take to find out? Be a couple, a week? Couple of weeks?
The next meeting. I'll have it.
Uh, Mr. Creel, could, oh, well, could we, could we table this till the next meeting? That'd be the sixteenth of July?
Yeah, we have no problem with that.
We have a motion to table it for two weeks from Mr. Tisdale and a second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Unanimous vote? With Demming, Guines, and Glavin out of the room. Moving on to...
Item, okay. Item, Item B, Jeremy Smith, Junior Care of Jared Smith. That case has been resolved.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Creel. Moving on to the routine agenda. Ms. Lucy?
Do I have a motion on the routine?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence, I know you got a question.
Yeah, wait, I got some. Money, money time. Give us a good report for a drink. Uh-oh. Come, let's get together. There's gonna be a lot of money. Do you have anything working? So, do you have anything working? Not that you don't have anything coming at all. How, how come that? That sounds kind of, that's kind of rare. You have something working, you got an opportunity or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we're not behind anything, are we? I think, we're not behind. We're paying them. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the routine agenda? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Do I have a motion to recess?
Good.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Unanimous vote. Meeting adjourned.